Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oil and Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, we're really glad you're here again today.
We also have the incredible Julie and Colin from our team with us today. What's up guys?
Hello.
How's it going everyone?
We are so excited to have you here today. We are going to be talking about how to host recurring live calls with your Get Oil link system. So this could be for perhaps opportunities to share young living on a regular basis. This could be calls for your team, for your customers, or even for programs that you might run if you have an oily adjacent business. So this week, we're going to be talking about how you can pull all of the pieces together that you would normally have to chase down and tie a bunch of loose ends together. We can create a seamless system which we will go through on today's live call to show you how you can create a system that you can follow on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, or for a set period of time. And you'll always know what to do, how to get things done. You can even work ahead of time so that the work for something like this becomes minimal and you can provide greater value without a higher investment of time on an ongoing basis. So if you are new here, welcome. We're so excited to have you here. Head into the chat and let us know where you're coming in from. If you are in our Facebook group, welcome. We're excited to be streaming in our Facebook group as well. If you would like to join us on one of these live calls, I'll be sharing a link here in the in the slides here in just a couple of minutes to show you how you can take advantage of everything that we offer here. This is a free live call that we offer for all of Team Young Living every single Thursday at noon Eastern US time. It's an opportunity for you to get to know your community and to learn more about how to work smarter not harder as you're sharing and living. So without further ado, we're going to go ahead and get out of video and into some slides. I also have an awesome little free thing for you to use today. I've got a checklist that we'll be going over. And of course, I've got our slides that we'll be sharing here. So please do go ahead and say hello in the chat if you are here with us live. We're always excited to see you and hear from you. So today, we're going to talk about why you might want to have a live call on an ongoing basis. What it looks like to host ongoing live calls with Get Oil and and of course, your checklist, if you would like to put this into action today. We'll also do a walkthrough of what it looks like to set this up. And of course, as always, as this call's purpose exists is to be a live help session for you. We will work together if you're here today looking for help and we'll take Q and A. So if you have questions, go ahead and add those to the Q and A now here on the Zoom call. If you are in our Facebook group or you're watching this as a recording on our YouTube channel, you can go to get oiling.com/weeklyworksession to join in on one of these live calls, get the recordings and be the first to receive resources like the one that we have shared with you today. And if you would like one-on-one help on a call like this one, you can go to get oiling.com/web site review to get on the list. It's totally free to you as a member of the Get Oil and Community. If you're working on a website, you're getting your feet wet with sharing, you are trying to figure out where to start, where to put your foot next, you can work together with us here on the on a call just like this one. And if you know what you'd like to have done, but you'd like to have it done for you, you can go to get oiling.com/concierge and you can learn about how our team can help you achieve your goals with your tech and your systems. So every profession has tools, right? So if you're a carpenter, you've got hammers and nails and saws, right? As a brand partner, you need to have certain tools handy to get the job done as a brand partner and your job as a brand partner is to share young living, right? So we've got to have tools to get that done. And while there are many tools that you can use successfully, there are only a few that are absolutely critical to have available all the time, right? So going back to the carpenter analogy, if you work with wood and building materials, you could use all of the tools in a hardware store, but there's only a handful that you will always, always, always have on your belt or in your bag, right? So as a brand partner, this is also true. And this is especially true where it comes to inviting so that you get more people exposed to young living through you. So there are three tools that we always need to have on hand as brand partners. If we are out in the world doing our job, which is sharing, in order to share, we must first invite. And so what do we need to have on hand to share? First, we need to have some kind of upcoming in-person event. This can be yours or someone else who is on your team or not on your team that's in your area. You want to have a physical opportunity to arrive with a guest that you have invited to experience product in person. Right? You want to have this as an option. Always be aware of things that are going on in your area, show up to others' events and of course, aspire to if you aren't currently hosting your own. You also want to make sure that you either are hosting or know of an upcoming virtual event, so an in-person event online where someone could join a Zoom call or a phone call or something like that and learn more about product, opportunity, etc. And then finally, and this is, I think we all know and understand this, we need to have some amount of availability on our schedule to be able to meet with someone one-on-one in person via Zoom or phone to talk about share oils and of course, get someone started. So today, we're going to talk about ways to host regular virtual events, or in this case, live calls on your Get Oil and site. So using your Get Oil and system 100%, nothing else. We're going to show you how you can have, always have a live virtual event to share. So this actually, what we're talking about here today isn't just about inviting. Being able to have an ongoing or a series of live calls is incredibly useful for other purposes in your business such as building community, right? So if you are looking to increase your exposure, your credibility, your list of warm market, your leads online. If you host regular live trainings, which you know, of course, if you're here, you're on one right now, that's something that we do. Maybe you want to host a book club, we've done a training on that. Or you, you know, would otherwise have a live opportunity for your community to interact with you with each other on a regular basis. Another way that you can use calls like this is to serve your people with things like challenges where perhaps you meet on a weekly basis or a daily basis to talk about a particular thing that you're working on. Or if you are a coach and you're offering some kind of group program, this is of course, something that you would incorporate into that experience. This is also a phenomenal way to engage your customers, right? So you could have virtual DIY classes, you could have story swaps where you get together and you share what's working for you right now. So that's the kind of thing that you can do to help to foster more curiosity and get more people engaged with product, right? And then of course, if you have team, you can be encouraging your brand partners with team huddles where again, you can swap stories. What's working now? How are you? How are you sharing? Who's doing what? What are we saying, etc., right? What's the newest, latest, greatest promotion? And you can share that information with your team on regular calls as well. Now, we're going to learn about how to get this done, but before we move into this, I want to make sure that you guys understand that what I'm about to show you is a tool that you can use over and over and over again to help you achieve any number of these different types of call series. And the amount of time that you invest in it is an initial investment. What you do on an ongoing basis, you've basically got a set and forget, or at least for the most part, completely leveraged system. So that if you're hosting a call on a weekly basis, all of the work is basically already done because you did it ahead of time. And instead of it taking 45 minutes for you to get something done aside from your time on the call, it takes you five or less, right? So I've created a checklist for you. If you're on our list, get oiling.com/weeklyworksession, you have already received this via email. We'll be dropping a link to this in the chat as well, just in case you are joining from some other spot. But we are going to be using this checklist. It is fillable and checkable. So you can actually go through and 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 set up a recurring live call for yourself. So our workflow will be as follows. We're going to first determine what the name of this call series will be, what the description for the call series will be, its schedule, what content, meaning what are we going to talk about? What are we going to share a plan for your call series? We're going to put that at the top of that worksheet. Then we will set up in our Get Oil and system how we will communicate throughout the series. This will vary slightly based on whether or not this will be an ongoing call that lasts into perpetuity. Or if this is something that is set for calendar date to calendar date. Then sort of the final piece here is we will create the point of registration, the front door for someone to register. Just as an example, of course, if you are a part of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session list, then if you go to good oiling.com/weeklyworksession, you'll actually see the point, the point of registration. That's a landing page there where you can sign up for this live call series. And I have a couple of saved replies that I use every week to send out the replays and to send reminders. That's one example. And of course, I'll show you a couple of things that you can do where this is concerned as well. So from there, you're going to follow the rest of the steps on the checklist. I actually have included on the checklist exactly what to do to right before your call, all the way through to after your call, if you're going to be sharing a replay. So let's go get into a live walkthrough of this and then get into some live help and Q and A, which we will have as always at the close of our call. So the first thing I'm going to do, bear with me just a second. I need to pull up this handy checklist here and switch my share so you guys can see what I'm talking about. All right, perfect. So the first thing that we're going to do here is to actually go through and 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 set up our call series. So the first thing that we're going to do is give it a title. That's going to be right here. So I'm I'll use our weekly work session as an example here. So this is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. Maybe you could name something similar for a brand partner call, right? So the schedule here, this is Tuesday or Thursdays at noon Eastern time, one hour. The description, obviously, you're going to want to describe what this is. We'll be using this in several places throughout the following steps. So we'll say, join to learn how to grow young living smarter, not harder with Get Oil and of course, you could write better, do more than that, but the content plan is going to be new topic each week. And this is, I'm going to put ongoing here because this does not end on a certain day, right? So we will be doing this until we say that we don't, right? So it's a new topic each week focusing on how to use Get Oil and to grow young living. And here you could in your content plan, go ahead and maybe map out week one, week two, etc. You could put this information in here. Or you could write this out somewhere else. But this, this does expand. So you could actually plan out your content right here if you'd like to. So that's our first thing that we need to do, right? So after we've done this, we just need to get into our Get Oil and account. And then once we are in here, we are going to get started with our next steps. So the first thing that we're going to do is to create a recurring Zoom meeting and Get Oil and I can actually click this and go straight there. So I'm going to create one and this is going to be a weekly live call. It's going to be recurring. I'm going to mute participants on entry. I prefer to not start video right away for hosting participants. What else have we done here? We've enabled a waiting room, which is something that I do tend to recommend unless this is something that's available to the public at large. Generally speaking, a waiting room is is a good idea. So this is how I like to have this set up, just like this. We're going to hit create meeting. And then once this is done, we're going to use the copy link URL and then we're going to get the start meeting URL because we're going to use these in next steps. So copy link and let's go put that right here. And then the start meeting link is this one here, we're going to copy that link and paste that right here. Now, a quick tip, you can create a bookmark in your browser and add that start meeting link to that bookmark so that, and I'll show you what this looks like on my browser. This call, for instance, right here, this is a recurring live call. I use this for private clients. You could use this for group calls as well. Actually, in fact, that's what this is here. So this is for group calls for a series that we ran recently. So if I were to open this, I would be able to start the meeting that everybody could then join. So that start meeting link is a nice little cheat code as a as a bookmark for you to quickly set that up. Now, from here, we need to decide how we're going to go about sharing. So and what this is going to require is for us to be clear on what we are going to be doing and for how long. So if this is a call series that is going to last 90 days, then we are going to use this setup list right here for a set period of calls, creating a date-based campaign. If you're creating something that will be going on into perpetuity, if you're going to have a call that is every Thursday and it will always be on Thursdays forever, then you're going to use this list right here, this ongoing call series. So make sure that you're clear on what it is that you are going to do before you start moving forward here. So let's just pretend that this is going to be a series that we're going to run for a set period of time. So to do that, we're going to create a campaign and Get Oil and on day zero, we're going to share the description which we've put up here. And then we're going to share the optional calendar link, which I'll talk about here in just a moment. And then we're going to create a couple of specific emails that we're going to use and then reuse in this campaign. So before I get too far into talking about this, here is the article that I am sharing here where you can actually go in and learn about creating a date-based campaign. But I'll just show you here really quickly. We can go into campaigns. We're going to create one and this is going to be for my live call series. And we're going to put this down here as live call series and this would be whatever the name is. It is important that you name this correctly because this is something that is going to show up when somebody manages their subscriptions with you. I am going to prefer email for this. And then I'm going to create a campaign. All right. So I'm going to write a new message. Remember our day zero message, we're going to welcome to the call series. We're going to add the description. You can obviously copy and paste from right up here. So I'll just copy this actually. So and then we'll also put our here. This one, we'll copy that and we'll put this here. So join us Thursdays. All right. And then what else do we need to include? We need to include the copy link URL. So let's copy this one. This is the link that other people will use to join. We'll say bookmark this link now to easily join on Thursdays. And I'll insert this link. There we go. And then you can sign off however you'd like to add more information, etc. This is going to be our day zero message. All right. So from there, we need to send out a couple of other messages, right? So we're going to, I'm not going to show you all of them, but let's say we'll just do our, our call is tomorrow. And then we'll do a reminder an hour before. So reminder, our call is tomorrow. Right? So then you say whatever it is that you want to say in here, of course, you can go by what's included in here, but essentially all you're going to do is say, you know, hey, our call is tomorrow. If you have planned out what it is that you're going to talk about, and this is going to be a limited series, right? So for instance, it's going to be week one, we're talking about this week two, this week three, this, etc. Then you would want to go ahead in here and remind them what you're, you're going to be talking about. All right. So that's going to be day one. And then we'll write one more here and this is going to be for we're about to go live. So we'll say, join the call now. We'll paste that. Remember that's our copy link URL right here. Okay. Obviously, again, you could tell them what you're going to be talking about. Or you could keep it simple. It's up to you. Definitely add a little more than what I'm showing you. All right. So that's going to be on day two. So that's going to be the day of the call. Okay. And then this is the day before. Now, our default time that we send things out is 5:00 PM Central US time. We want to make sure that we get into our advanced settings here. If you're using a campaign like this and send this at a specific time of day. So I want to send this at 11:00 AM or actually that's going to be it's going to be 10:00 AM if I'm, if the call is going to be at noon Eastern time. So you're going to want to do a little bit of math here, convert time zones. There are websites that are time zone converter calculators. If you don't feel particularly adept at that, they're free and they're pretty easy to use if you ever feel confused about this. All right. So this is going to send out, I want to send this out at 5:00 PM Eastern, that's 4:00 PM Central the day before. And then what we can essentially do here is make a copy and then space these out. But before we get into that, we're going to send this on a specific date. Okay. So if my call series is going to start on the fifth, that's a Thursday, I am sending my first email on the fourth. That is a Wednesday. Now that means I need to actually start this campaign on Tuesday. So you see how this shows up on the fit? Now I've specified this here where we say, set the campaign start date to one calendar date prior to the first scheduled message. So if my series, our live call is going to be on the fifth, I need to send a reminder on the fourth. Ergo, we need to set the campaign to start on the third because day one is 24 hours after this day zero message is sent. Okay. So we've created a date-based campaign. We've got that set up here and we've got a reminder for the day before and the hour before. Now, whether or not you create a replay email is going to depend, if you put it into this campaign, on how you are hosting these calls. If you are offering replays, which you definitely don't have to. If you're, you're offering them in a vault, then I would definitely create an additional email or yeah, an additional message like one of these that sends them to the page in the vault where you're putting the replays. And then I would basically alternate between these three messages, the third being the one with the replay throughout the series. So let's just pretend that that is something that we're going to do. I'm going to write a new message here and I'll tell them your replay is live. And then this is where we would put the link to replay page involved. And again, this is if you're doing this, if you're not doing this, I'll be showing you in the next example, how you can send out replays directly from your Get Oil and system without having to host your content in a vault. So this needs to be on day three because that is the day after we've sent out the live call. Okay, you can again, you can adjust the time if you wish. Maybe I'll send that out in the morning. Okay. So now what you're going to do, if you're going to be doing this over the course of say, four weeks, for instance, we're going to make a copy of this message. And then we're just going to do some simple math, right? So in this case, we're going to add seven days. So that's number eight. You can actually go up here and double check if that's going to be a Wednesday. Go look. There we go. The 11th is a Wednesday. Fantastic, right? So that means that we're about to go live this one. We're going to move that to day nine here. There we go. And then we'll copy this one and you would just repeat this process. And of course, you can then go in and make any additional changes that you want. So if for instance, in this week, right, you could actually name them week one, week two, etc. You can actually go in and modify what's been said here. But just make sure that if they're not all going to say the same thing that you do go in and make those changes. So week one, we're talking about this, week two, we're talking about that, etc. But the benefit of duplicating these messages is so that you don't have to go and find the link over and over again for that replay. And and the and the live call, right? So all of the links that you're sharing are going to be more or less the same. So this is the date-based campaign option. So that is this checklist here. Now, if you have an ongoing call series, this is actually really simple. It just requires a couple of extra steps from you on a weekly basis. But you can do this ahead of time as well. So what we're going to do is actually create saved replies that we're going to use exactly the same as the type of messages that we used in the campaign. We're just going to be using them to schedule broadcasts instead of we're going to schedule them manually instead of relying on a campaign to send them out on schedule. Okay. So the first one will be reminder, our call is tomorrow, right? So this is going to be call series reminders, the name reminder, our call is tomorrow. And then we'll be talking about right? And then we'll put anything else here. If you have branding, etc. This is what we do for the weekly work session on the Monday mornings. We'll schedule an email to go out that will promote the call that we'll have on Thursday. And then we have another one that we send out. Again, it's a saved reply. The links are all here. So we'll say, here's the link to join. Change this to one to a button even. Right? So we can create that. Again, you can have quite a bit more information in here if you want to. We'll do another one. So for this one, it would be call series about to go live. Right? And here again, you would have the link, you would have whatever it is that you want to say to somebody, reminding them of what you're going to be talking about that day, encouraging them to join, etc. Your sign off, everything that you want to share, you would put that into this saved reply. And then the final one where we say your replay is ready. And here you would say, here's what we talked about. And then of course, you can put the link to your vault if you're using a vault, but if you aren't using a vault, you can simply insert the link to your video here. Once you have your video processed, you can actually put it right in, right here. So we could actually select this and pop that straight in there. But in this case, is the saved reply, you're going to be using this over and over again. So I would just focus on having the verbiage here that you know that you want to share every week. And then when you're ready to go and schedule this to send, then you can add that video, which I'll show you actually in an upcoming step. So you create those three saved replies. Awesome. So the first thing that we want to do, so now we've created our saved replies, we actually skipped a step here. So day before, day of and replay. So those were our three saved replies. Now you can create a confirmation campaign and Get Oil and this is one thing that you do need to do. And this is just to let them know that they have successfully signed up for the campaign. So this is the live call series confirmation. And we'll pop that here. We'll make that email based and then we will again, just write a quick message. And we'll tell them that they are registered. And again, you welcome them, you put the description in here, just as we did in the previous campaign. Except in this particular campaign, you are only going to have one message, letting them know that they successfully signed up. Okay. Those other three saved replies that we just created are what you're going to be using to schedule your communications on an ongoing basis. Okay. So an optional thing that you can choose to do here is to create a to create a file that you can use to allow people to add your call series to their calendar. Now, I'm not going to go all the way through this, but this is something that's free that we use. Actually, if you check your emails from us for the the weekly work session, you're able to see that you have the ability to actually generate what is called an ICS file. That ICS file, you can then upload it to your file section in your Get Oil and account. And then you can link that on a page as well as inside of emails to allow people to add your your, your calls to their calendar. Okay. Now, if you are going to use a, a page in a vault to share your replays, use this resource bundle, which you will see right here, I've actually linked to it. It has the schedule Zoom calls. It has the schedule Zoom calls and replace page that you can use as a template. Okay, so now we've completed this first part, the final piece that we need to get to do here before we can start running our calls. Is to set up the point of registration, you can do this by setting up a page or a landing page. I'll show you how to do this with a landing page, just because it's super simple. So we'll go over here to landing pages. We'll create one. Maybe you have an image that you like to use for your call series, you could create one in Canva and pop it here. And we'll say. Registered for the live calls. And then we're going to go and add that campaign, so this is going to be the live call series. Maybe this is the confirmation one, if we have an ongoing. Series, right, so it's going to be every single week forever. And you're going to set this landing page up, of course, we do have other trainings on landing pages if you want to go into greater depth with this. I do recommend that you either use, if you are at a seed or starter plan, or if you're at basic. You might be using a confirmation page at basic, in which case, if you have a generic one, absolutely send them to a confirmation page. Or you could just show them a confirmation message, you're registered. Click the button below and be redirected to my website, right? So you would set that up, you would add a tag, this is important, name of your live call series. Right, and you would set this up otherwise, just how you want it, and then this would be ready to go. And of course, you would set up a page similarly. It would just be, you know, a little bit more design, because obviously a landing page is more simple. So you set up your registration. And once you've done that, you're totally connected, so somebody could actually go to this page. Once it's published, and this is going to be live call series. So if somebody were to go to this page. After you have set it up exactly how you want, and they put in their name, their email. And you could optionally not have phone here if you wanted, we're not requiring phone now. There we go, so once we've done this, we've got our confirmation message that pops up, we send them to the homepage. Or whatever it is that you want to send them to, that person is now signed up for your call series. And so we can actually look in our dashboard. And we can see. That this person visited just a few seconds ago. They are now tagged with live call series right here. And you can actually see. That they have this live call series confirmation set up. Okay, so now that that's ready to go, before the call. If you have set up a date based campaign, you're good to go. You don't really have to do anything else, but if this is an ongoing series. Then you are going to have just a couple of steps that you're going to follow to schedule your messages. So what we'll do here is from our contacts. We're going to go to filters, we're going to look for that live call series. Filter for our contacts. Under actions. We're going to mail, and then we're going to go and find. Our live call series. About to go live, right, and it pops in that information. Or maybe if we want to share the replay, this is, this will be an important one, I think. So if we'll go to live call series replay. After your call, you can actually add your video directly here. Or of course, you could send them to the link in the vault, so we'll select. This one. And it's just going to go to a page on the website. And when they click this, it will actually take them off to a page that has your, your site logo, your menu. But it will only have the video there on the page. So this is how you would do that, you could obviously send that right away, or you could schedule it for a later date. And you would do this weekly or monthly, or however you would want to set it up. If you. Are going to be planning your content for your calls out in advance. Then you also have the ability to schedule these out many weeks or even months in advance, so that that's more of a set it and forget it for you. Now, when it's time for you to launch the call, you've put all of your communication out there. And now that it takes you no time to get these calls started, it's just a matter of showing up. And hitting that start meeting link, which you can find from inside of your Zoom meetings in Get Oiling. Or of course, if you have created a bookmark, you can. Click that bookmark link and take you straight there. Now, if you're wanting to record your call, you want to make sure that you, once you are on the Zoom call, that you record to the cloud. If you plan to record and share the replays. Now, after your call, you're going to actually be able to find that recording in my recordings in your Zoom meetings panel. So let's go take a look at that. So if we had a, a recording here, it would actually show up. And then there would be actually a link that you can click that would take your recording immediately over to your videos. And we do have several trainings on our channel where we talk about our videos and how you can move them over from Zoom. But that is essentially what you would do, once you get it here, you might want to rename it. Right, so if I wanted to rename this, so this is monthly live event for June. So that I know the difference. You can change the, the collection, right? So in this case, this is monthly live calls. Because I want to keep that separate from, for instance, my customer education or my brand partner videos, etc. Okay, so we've launched the call, we've recorded it, we found it in my recordings, and we've hit copy active speaker into our video library. From there, you've renamed and you've added to collections. Final step here is to share that recording, which I did show you how to do with filtering for that broadcast email using the saved reply. But then you could also add it to your video replays page in your vault. So let me show you really quickly, if you are using a page in a vault, how you would go and embed that video from that recording. Inside of your vault, so let's go take a look here. And I think I have a live calls and replays, I don't, but we can pretend that this is one of those pages. I'll go down here and maybe create a new section, so this will be. June. Live call replay. Of course, here you would. Change this a bit to talk about whatever it is that you covered on the call. We don't need it to go anywhere, so we're going to remove this, learn more. And then where this video is, I'm going to delete it. And I'm going to go find my video that I want to add. Which is this one. There we go. So once you've got that done, of course, if you have a date based campaign and all of the, or, or you have a saved reply. That's linking to this, this page in your vault. Then all you need to do is just set it up and send it off, you don't even have to link. The, the video directly here, and that's it, that is your complete system. It is a little bit of work on the front end for you to get. Everything set up for sharing, but then this becomes something that you can use. Week over week over week, month over month over month, and for multiple purposes in your business. So I'm excited to see if you guys have any questions, and then I do believe, let me see. Okay, yeah, so we're, we're wide open for questions or requests to work together live here on today's call. Alright, so Krista says, using my Get Oiling account, can I record through Zoom? And then save the video and then upload the class in Get Oiling? I use Vimeo in the past, I'm wondering if I still need to use it. Yeah, so Krista, definitely following what we shared here today. You are correct, you do not need to use Vimeo, and you can do all of that in Get Oiling, just like I shared with you. The trick is going to be to, and, and if you're talking about like. Whether it's live, you've got other people on the call, or you're just like recording class content. You can hit Zoom, open it up with you or with multiple people, record to the cloud. And then, once that cloud recording is processed in your Zoom meetings, you're going to click that link that says copy to my video library. Make sure that it is the, the active speaker view. And that it's the video version, and when you copy that over, that will put that right there into your Good Oiling. So you don't need to have a separate video manager, none of that. And you actually get quite a few videos included with your Good Oiling Plan level at basic and higher. Rebecca says, what happens if someone signs up the day of or a few hours before the call? Will they get the starting now email? So if it's date based, if the campaign, so long as they signed up for the campaign. Before that call went out. Then you're good to go. Now, if it is something that you're actively promoting on an ongoing basis, and you want people to be able to join. Even if it's just a few minutes before you're about to go live, this is why I actually recommend putting the link to join. And, and encouraging them to bookmark it, putting that in multiple emails, including the confirmation email. And maybe even on the redirect page, if it's something that's inside of a vault, of course, you could always just have the button for them to click and open. So, and then in the case of if you're not using a. A campaign, but you are sending out your scheduling emails, if they've opted in. Anybody who opts in and is tagged with that, with that tag. Is going to receive it at the time that it was scheduled to send. So if they opted in to and got that confirmation campaign, and they, you know. Did that, they, they did so before that scheduled email that broadcast was sent to go out, then they would get it. So in this case, you guys saw how I filtered the contacts for the one person who had signed up so far. Well, if a hundred people signed up between now and when the next call goes live or the next broadcast goes out. Then those hundred people are going to receive that notification. Maybe a silly, that's not a silly question, where is the replay link going? So the replay link, it depends on where you're hosting your video replays. So if you're going to be keeping it inside of a vault, then you would be putting it onto a page in a vault, just like the one that I showed you just a moment ago. If you are not using a vault, then it would simply send them to a link that is unique. You don't have to create a new page, it's just a unique link for where the video is displayed on your website, if you're enabling that sharing. And if you're going to add video to email, which is essentially what you're doing there. And there is an article there in that checklist that you can, you can read more about this. But when you check to make this available to share, then you can actually add it to email. It will pop a, a GIF into there, like that little animated image, like you saw in the example. And so they'll see that when they click it, it takes them to a page on your website that displays the video. Is there a way to edit? So no, in this case, no, not inside of our system. So if you are, if you're planning on or anticipate needing to edit your video. Then I would auto record to your computer, which is a setting that you can actually. Put in your, your Zoom meetings, so if you can auto record to your computer, which is what I do for these calls, by the way. I auto record to my device, I go in and you can use free tools for this. I'm on a Mac, I'm one hundred percent positive, there's a way to do this, it's probably easier, by the way, on a PC. And you can actually go in and trim the video on either end, if you need to do something more complicated than that, then. That's right over my head, but, but yeah, you, you can download the video to your device, edit it, and then upload it into your videos and get willing. That will take just a little bit more time than what I've shared with you, but if it's important for you to edit, then of course, that's the step that you would need to take. Do we have other questions? Pippa says, can you send some of the video directly and send others to a vault? Yeah, sure, you would want to make sure that the people that, that you're tagging them appropriately, right? So. Let's just say, for instance, you have your. I'll give an example, you have a video that you maybe created that is shareable. For, for folks, it was a live event for anybody who uses Young Living products or is maybe interested in using Young Living products, right? So you've had your Zoom call, you've recorded it to the cloud, you've transferred it into your videos. You would like to put that into your vault, for instance, for your people who are your customers, to be able to watch as a replay. But you also want for your non-customers, your non-members to be able to see it as well. You could do both, but you would want to make sure that your people are tagged appropriately. And that you're filtering your contacts before you send that out, that way you're not sending duplicates, right? Or you could, actually, if you wanted to make your life super easy, you could put the direct link right there in, like for the video, right into the email. And then you could put a link to the vault underneath, and if somebody doesn't have vault access, they just can't access it, right? Maybe that makes them more curious, I don't know, if that plays into the, the design experience that you're looking for, then that is an option that you have. Let's see, Karen asks, is the start meeting link a way to bypass logging into your Get Oiling and then getting into Zoom? You do need to be logged into, so that, that shortcut that I showed you, you do need to be logged into your Get Oiling account. In order for that bookmark to the start meeting link to work for you. So do make sure that you're logged into your Good Oiling account. What else? Good questions, you guys, does anyone have any requests for review? Is there anything that you are maybe working on, or if you have questions to clarify anything that you've learned today? Feel free to come out and maybe raise your hand if you like, we can bring you out to chat. Or if you want to put that into the actual chat discussion here, then you're welcome to. And I'm also curious to hear, head over into the chat and let us know, how do you plan to use this? What will that look like for you? Do you have a coaching program? Do you want to have a call for your leads, a call for your customers, for your brand partners? Do you want to do? Like a weekly story swap? All kinds of awesome things you can do when you gather together. And, and gathering together online opens things up for you to communicate and connect with people all over the world. Adrian's working on a new yoga class series, this is a phenomenal option for yoga classes, oh my goodness, yes. And the other thing too, and actually, let me show you something real quick. Let's just say, for instance. And this, this would be, you know, sort of a, just a little strategic bit. If you are allowing people, let's say for instance, to join your live call. But in order for them to access the replay, they have to be a member. What you would do is you would actually, from your, from your contacts. Or actually, here, I'll just go from, from the dashboard, rather. From our dashboard, if you filter. I want to send an email, we're going to filter for our live call series. And we're going to write an email to them. Now, if we want to say. The replay is up. And we want to basically use this as a way to tell our paying customers. That they can go access the replay now, but create a little bit of FOMO for somebody who's not a customer yet, but maybe knows they should be. Then what you could do is you could actually. Say, watch it now. And then you could go add video. And here we go, monthly live event June, I'm going to select it. But I'm going to send them to a specific URL. And this one will be to the replay page in my vault. So I'm going to actually go find that really quickly here. Let me copy this link. And I'm going to send them right there, so I'm going to add that, oops. Why wouldn't that work? Why wouldn't this be a valid URL? Any ideas?
Looks pretty valid to me, I'll check that out.
Alright, so. I, we, I think we, we can, we can tell you that this probably won't, this will work better for you than it's working for me right now. Anyways, you're going to, you're going to add that specific URL here, and then just, I'm going to pop that in here for now. So it's going to look like this, they're actually going to see the video as though they could play it. But when they click it, it's going to take them over to your member area where they have to log in. And if they can't log in, that means, well, I guess they need to become your customer, right? Krista says, I will have a weekly follow-up call for an online class, Tantrums to Thriving, that will be piloting next week. Tantrums to Thriving, that's fantastic. Very cool. Amanda asks, can I run an automation that if someone downloads a specific file from an email, it will send them a campaign? Yes, yes, it does, let me show you exactly how you can do that, that's a brilliant idea. So basically, what you're going to do, Amanda, is you are going to go and create an automation. It's going to be over here under contact settings, automations. You're just going to want to make sure that you put the, the redirect, so this is going to be campaign after download. Right, I'll just use that as an example for now, we're going to add the campaign that we want to, to add here. And maybe we want to also add a tag, right, because we want to say. Downloaded PDF, right, or obviously give the name of your thing. And you might want to also, if they are on a different campaign before this, you might want to remove that one, you want to start a new campaign from this point. You could do that as well, that would be going to campaigns, finding whatever campaign that is, and then. That would be going to campaigns, finding whatever campaign that is, and then removing that campaign. And then finally, you put the link to your download right here. So that means they're not going to see any of this happening, they're just going to see their download. So let's just go back to, I'll, I'll actually show you how we can find that URL real quick. So it's going to be under videos, images, and files here. Under files. Okay, so I want to copy the link here to this Thrifty Girl's Guide to Greening a Home. So we know that she downloaded that custom URL right here. Paste it and create the automation. So when we insert this into the email, when she clicks, so you're going to copy this link, and instead of linking that download, you're linking the automation. So if I'm going to create a campaign, and let's just pretend it's this one. All right, so instead of putting Three Ways Women Can Beat Exhaustion, I'm actually going to go in and paste that automation, do you see that? Update that, and then when she clicks it, it's still going to take her to the download, but it's going to initiate the new campaign. It's going to maybe remove the previous one and of course, tag her. So yes, and that is such a smart thing for you to do. You're really dialing in and providing communication based on the actions that your contact is taking and not just sending because you got it. Really awesome idea. Okay. Awesome, any other questions, you guys? I think Greg, you got a follow-up question here. What else, what else are we using this for and/or do you have questions before we get going? Really excited to see what you guys do with this. All right, I think we're good, you guys. Fantastic questions today, thank you for coming. I know this is a little bit of an advanced topic, but as you get into growth and leadership with your team and building more leverage into how you run your business, you're going to find that this is something that is necessary for you. And it's better that you're doing it than, than trying to wrangle whatever information is out there to provide to others. And if you're following Smart Work and using the systems that we've shared with you here today, then you have the ability to actually put this on repeat. So you can work once and benefit from it over and over and over and over again. So thank you guys so much for being here, it's always such an honor to spend this time with you. We look forward to seeing you back next week. Till then, take care, everybody.